From I to eleven here. I'd like to call a meeting to order. You have noticed Bill Scanlon will be setting up his projector for later in the evening. We have an agenda this evening which is quite a packed with a lot of information for the townspeople and folks here also. But I'd like to start with those comments and concerns from the board, please, first, for my right. And any comments or concerns brought to your attention since our last meeting?
Nothing.
No. I can open this thing up.
I'm good right now. I've got some stuff there that'll be referenced to what we're doing tonight, so...
So you can put it all in here, all of everything that's...
Yeah, I have nothing that's...
Alright.
I'm good.
Here we go. Alright. Melissa? Folks, anybody here in the audience, comments or concerns at this time? Very good, you're going to move on, thank you. Alright, right now, the board would like to discuss special permit two sixty-three. Two sixty-three, folks, is a permit applied for by Mark Andrews. Mark Andrews owns the property right across from the car wash, okay? And that's the abandoned building there. Mr. Andrews is going to take that lot, take that building down, and he's going to expand the storage facility, alright? He's been in front of the board prior, and with his attorney, Mr. Barfield, we've talked a lot about it, we discussed it with him, and we're in the final stages. This is just going to take a vote on what he's presented on his application. Again, for those of you who haven't been here, the storage sheds are going to look the same, okay? The entrance is going to be at the same place, down right across, behind the White House as we take the left of up the South Bridge Road, it's right there on the right. And it'll be fenced in along the front, the sides in the back towards the Yellow House. There'll be fence around it, low lighting, and you're going to see nothing but you see now, it just extended. So that's going to take down an ISO and it's going to put up storage facilities for those who need it. The, correct me if I'm wrong here, the impact on the terrain or anything like that, it's still going to be crushed gravel, correct?
Yeah.
And the drainage will run the same direction as it does now, down this way and into the same storm drains without any more impact than what we have. Mr. Cordak, you have a question?
No.
Okay, very good, thank you. With that, take a look at, yes, sir?
That little storage shed to the left of that, is that staying or is that going to be demolished also? There's a little garage, a little storage shed.
That's coming down.
That's coming down.
It's coming down.
Yeah, everything in there is coming down. The whole lot will be cleaned out, leveled off, and gravel, no more grass or weeds and stuff like that. So the impact on the area right there will look good. Matter of fact, the gentleman here tonight, Mr. Burrell, was speaking on behalf of one of the homeowners, and they're all in favor of it. So, you know, at least something's being done there, okay? And that ISO will be gone, and hopefully a lot of people in town will be able to use the facility. So if the board would at this time, any questions? I'm sorry. Very good, thank you. If the board would, take a look at the permit? Take a look at what we have in front of us? And if anybody's questioning, I know sometimes people wonder how we get about to do this. Under our bylaws, section three point two five dash one, you know, that's a, okay, what does that mean? Wayhouses and storage facilities, okay? That's the title under three point two five dash one. Storage facilities are allowed in the village district by granting a special permit. It is in the village district, it is a special permit, hands were held, and this is the final. So it is in the bylaws that facilities such as that may be constructed with a special permit, and it has been, this again is just an addition.
It was reviewed by the fire chief.
Yes.
Yeah. Just the fire chief looked at it, discussed plans on how they could get fire trucks in there after you had them.
Also, there is a restriction on flammable's. You can tell them no flammable's, but what goes in and out, you hope there aren't combustibles or whatever, yet as Peter just said, Peter Kreuzer just said, the fire chief has had input, and the owner is well aware. Ed, you also?
Yep.
Melissa?
Peter.
Yep.
Sue.
Alright, is there a motion to form a board decision of special permit number two six three for Mark Andrews' site plan, preference for storage facilities on fifty South Bridge Road? Excuse me, so motion to accept it as written.
Yeah, I make a motion to accept special permit app two sixty-three as written.
Motion made, second. Thank you, Ed. Conversation understood by all? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
Do you roll call vote?
And yeah, roll call vote. I'll go by round the table. Peter?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Melissa? And myself, yes. Go sign it, and then leave it, Melissa's side, please. It's a little doctor. It's a little doctor. It's a little doctor with that. Tom, you also?
Yes.
It's a thief. No, better than we. Alrighty, we've still got a couple minutes here, so what I'll do is just bring you up to where we're going next. At six forty-five, we have an informational meeting. At six forty-five, that's the time it's posted for. The informational meeting this evening is going to be on. Where are we going with the town? Town planner Bill Scanlon has taken a lot of time, we reviewed it, on what's left for commercial property between Westbrook Field Line and Palmer on the sixty-seven area. It has a breakdown. Bill has, when you look at what he's prepared, you're going to see color schemes, he's going to go over everything this evening. And it's going to let you know what's there, and then everybody's going to turn around and say why and how come. Well, there's not much. How do you bring commercial into an area that we don't have much? When we're trapped between two hills and a river runs through, alright? And our commercial areas are right in that amongst the area. No one else is going to drive up different roads to get to commercial. We want to keep it open for people. Yet to keep it open for people, we have to have the properties. Think about what's there, those of us who've been living in town for a while, think about what's on either side of the road as we move from the Westbrook Field Line all the way to Palmer, alright? Environmental impacts, properties, conservation land, alright? Not too much. And then with that, after Bill talks about that, we're going to move on to this medical marijuana. There's been a lot of changes. And we, following the state regulations a year ago, came up with a proposal for a bylaw. And with that bylaw that we proposed, it would have opened the town to accept it, from anything from hydrophonic, marijuana being grown down at the Wright's Mill, employing people to facilities. Well, I got a red face because I was in the sun, my face was red last time out there because I got the crap knocked out of me by everybody in this town. Okay, that's on the record, I don't care. Yet it still has to be what the state wants, and we're proposing it again. We're going to talk about that. Alright, so there's a lot of different things that we try to get across to people and what people want done. You can only do so much with what we have. Many of you probably have seen, or maybe you haven't seen, the plans for the new Extramont. Oh, boy, I'll tell you, you seen them Cumberland Farms over in Sturbridge and the one they're building in Ware? The Extramont that they're putting here, was it the old country kitchen in Sturbridge? Come on, folks, we're going towards the shopping center where All Might is, that's the one on the right-hand side there. Country Kitchen, what's the name of that place? Big restaurant.
Cracker Barrel.
Cracker Barrel.
Cracker Barrel, well, that's cool. Right there at that shop, when you pull in where the gas pumps is, that Extramont is the same as being built here. It's going to have a deli, it's going to have everything in it, alright? It's going to take up Mr. Leesack's property to the right, it's going to be a big store, or convenience store in a sense. Yet where else can we go with things? I mean, that's commercial, Mr. Leesack's had that zone that way, and it's been that way forever. Bill, as I said, stayed in the minute ago, has really put time into this and to show you. And when you see the colors and the way it's presented, it's going to be pretty interesting to all of us. And again, one, two, three, four, five, six, two selectmen and four people. And this is an informational meeting that's been posted. Where are you going with it, okay? I don't know. Where else are we going to go? And we got May, two months. It's four meetings, five meetings for us, and one more public meeting to start talking about this. I don't know why it goes so bad, alright? Don't tell me everybody else is spreading fertilizer tonight. It could be. Bill, why don't you set up and then you can start? Again, Bill Scanlon, town planner, will present this. I'm going to do it. Bill, you have to...
It's a first-time agenda. So many missed hours.
Great. Bill, you have to...
Yeah. Yeah. No, that's it. I keep forgetting we're here.
I know, I don't like to waste time. We don't need suffering until eight o'clock, so when I get tired, I can go home and shut it off.
I have to speed.
Oh, yeah.
I drew and drew.
Bill, you want to put it on the desk? Can you put it on the desk, make it small enough to fill the screen up? We can't raise that, I don't want to hang it from E-Boys camera frame up there.
Yeah, that might happen.
Okay. Alright. Is that alright for everybody? Everybody see from the background, Mr. Dash? You see? Very good? Okay. I'll make sure. Alright, Bill.
Okay, this evening we have three zoning amendments to discuss. This is just an informational meeting. The planning board wanted to present some of this information to the public to get thoughts and comments before actually going forward with meeting a specific proposal. Once this meeting is over, the planning board will finalize zoning amendments, and it will be an official public hearing on those amendments prior to town meeting. So this is very much in the form of the stages, and if you have any thoughts or comments about these ideas, now's the time to bring them out so we can take those into account when we actually prepare the amendments. So the first amendment to consider tonight is changing the dimensional requirements of the village district. The village district includes the area in Warren Center and West Warren. It's a little hard to see on the colors on the screen, but it's the green area around Warren Center and West Warren. Here it is. Also, this is the green area in West Warren and Warren Center. As you can see, that the village district makes up about seven point six percent of the town. Purpose of the district is to allow a mix of land uses, including high-density residential, retail, office, industry, et cetera, meet the town's needs for goods and services. Contains most of the town's shops, restaurants, and offices. The zoning commits a wide variety of commercial and industrial uses. Villages of Warren Center and West Warren developed around large mill sites. These areas are intensively developed compared to the rest of the town, and public water and sewer services in the area helps to accommodate intensive development. So the village districts of Warren Center, there are about six hundred eighty-four parcels and nine hundred forty-three point five acres. On West Warren, there are three hundred and sixty parcels and almost four hundred acres within that district. Currently, most of the development is of a residential nature. Single-family homes make up about fifty-four percent of the parcels in Warren Center and forty-six percent in West Warren. Two- and three-family, twelve percent and sixteen percent. Other residential, six percent and ten percent. Vacant residential, seventeen percent in both. Commercial and industrial are only about five or six percent of all of the parcels in these areas. So while we think of these districts as being highly commercial, in fact, they are primarily residential, and I think the name village is a pretty good term for what we have there. Currently, the dimensional requirements for a single-family home is fifteen thousand square feet and a hundred feet of furniture, with a front setback of thirty feet and a side and rear setback of fifteen feet. Two- through four-family homes require forty thousand square feet, a hundred and fifty feet of furniture, and fifty-foot setbacks all around the property line. A multi-family requires ten thousand square feet per unit with two hundred feet of furniture and fifty-foot setbacks. Commercial and industrial have the same requirements as single-family, except for the fact that there are no setbacks. Now, when we think of some of the commercial areas along Main Street, all of the buildings are up close to the street, so in fact, it makes sense not to have a front setback requirement. And in fact, most of the buildings are joining each other, so also, the fact that there's no side jar requirement probably fits what's there today as well. For industrial, we have the Warren Pumps and the Wright Mill property, so these standards probably may not be appropriate for industrial purposes, but they seem to be pretty appropriate for the commercial development that exists today. So when we look at the lot sizes in West Warren, you know, there's a fifteen thousand square foot minimum lot size, and one hundred and sixty-six properties are over fifteen thousand square feet, a forty-six percent, which means that fifty-four percent are actually under fifteen thousand square feet, and you can see the breakdown here in West Warren. There are a lot of very small lots, many under ten thousand square feet, in fact, thirty-eight percent are under ten thousand square feet. In Warren Center, it's very similar, although the lots are a little bit bigger. Here, fifty-five percent are greater than fifteen thousand square feet, and forty-nine, I guess that should be forty-four percent are under fifteen thousand square feet. And you can see that twenty-six percent are under ten thousand square feet, so there are still quite a few lots in Warren Center which are non-conforming because they don't meet the fifteen thousand square foot minimum. And then all combining, excuse me, combining the two districts, fifty-two percent have more than fifteen thousand square feet, and forty-eight percent have less than fifteen thousand square feet. So that's a very high percentage of the lots in both districts, which are under the minimum of fifteen thousand square feet. As far as furniture goes, there's a hundred-foot furniture required for single-family homes, and forty-five percent in West Warren are conforming, and fifty-five percent are non-conforming, which means they have less than a hundred feet of furniture. Two- and three-family dwellings require a hundred and fifty feet of furniture, only fourteen percent, or eight lots, actually have a hundred and fifty feet of furniture, and eighty-six percent have less than a hundred and fifty feet of furniture. Multi-family dwellings require two hundred feet of furniture, and in the districts, none of them have that much. In fact, all of them, all thirteen, are under two hundred feet. For commercial and industrial, there's a hundred-foot furniture requirement, forty-four percent have less than that, and fifty-six percent have more than a hundred, excuse me, fifty-six percent have less than a hundred feet of furniture, and forty-four percent have more than a hundred feet of furniture. So more than half of the lots are non-conforming. For Warren Center, very similar, for single-family homes, forty percent are non-conforming, two- and three-family, eighty percent are non-conforming, multi-family, eighty-five percent are non-conforming. Commercial and industrial, a little bit better here, thirty-nine percent are non-conforming, and sixty-one percent are conforming. And of all the lots in Warren Center, forty-eight percent are non-conforming, so almost half are non-conforming. And the median furniture here for this district is a hundred and seven feet. For all parcels, again, the key numbers are over here, forty-five percent are non-conforming, eighty-three percent of two- and three-family dwellings are non-conforming, ninety-two percent of all multi-family are non-conforming, forty-six percent of commercial and industrial are non-conforming, and of all lots, fifty-two percent, or over half, are non-conforming. For single-family homes, which I think is what most people are interested in because that's the predominant land use in the district. In West Warren, fifty-five percent of all of these single-family homes are non-conforming because they have less than a hundred feet of furniture, and forty percent in Warren Center are non-conforming because they have less than a hundred feet of furniture. So I think what we, the main, I think conclusion to be drawn here is that the zoning dimensional requirements don't really fit what exists today, and that forces a lot of homes to have to come up to the planning board for approval if they want to do any kind of an expansion. So in Warren Center, the green color here indicates all of the non-conforming lots. Some of them may look fairly large, but they may have less furniture than is otherwise required. Some of them may have large furniture but less area, so this is a combination of both non-conforming by furniture in area. In West Warren, again, same color scheme, you can see that in sort of the center of West Warren, there's a high predominance of non-conforming lots. Again, these were built to provide housing for the mill, which is down in here, and so they were built on very small lots, and water and sewer, there's really no public health issues involved with these lot sizes, but they're just non-conforming because when the town adopted zoning, established these requirements, which I'm not sure why they made them as large as they did, but they don't really fit the pattern that's there today. And then in West Warren, in this, this block downed by Chapel, Main, Central, and North Streets, all of these lots are non-conforming. So I think there's a disconnect between zoning and what exists today, and so the planning board is thinking about what can we do to try to fix that issue. So the conclusion is that the minimum lot area and furniture requirements are not consistent with the development pattern in village districts. Many homes are legally non-conforming, that is, they were legal when they were built, but then zoning came along and established these requirements so that these lots are now legally non-conforming, they're allowed to remain, but they can't be expanded unless they come to the planning board for a special permit. There are a few exceptions in the bylaw for single- and two-family homes, but in many cases, homeowners do have to come to the planning board for the special permit if they want to do any kind of expansion to their property. So what we're thinking about is, how do we want to modify this dimension requirements so that fewer properties are non-conforming? So for single-family homes, if we changed the minimum area to ten thousand square feet, eighty-three properties would come into compliance. If we went all the way down to seventy-five hundred square feet and cut it in half to what exists today, another fifty-nine lots would come into compliance, for a total of one hundred and forty-two. For furniture, if we changed it from a hundred feet to seventy-five feet, ninety-two lots would come into compliance, and if, again, if we cut it in half to fifty feet, eighty additional lots would come into compliance, for a total of a hundred and seventy-two. So making these kinds of changes, and we're putting a lot of these properties into performance. What I don't have is, and what I can't really get is, the setbacks, how many are non-conforming in terms of furniture, side of the various setbacks, because I don't have that information, but making the furniture and lot area conform, I think would do a great deal for these areas. For two- and three-family dwellings, there are fifty-nine, two- and three-family dwellings in each district, only three meet the forty thousand square foot minimum. Warren Center has seventy-nine two- and three-family dwellings, and only three meet the forty thousand square foot. So if we change it to fifteen thousand square feet, forty-four properties would come into compliance, and if we change the ten thousand square feet, another eighty-two properties would come in, fifty-nine percent would come into compliance. So these are just some options, which is why we wanted to have this meeting tonight to get your thoughts about what made sense. And the planning board hasn't picked any of these yet, so it's really open for you to tell us what you think. Existing for single-family homes, fifteen thousand square feet, a hundred feet of furniture, thirty feet front setback, and fifteen foot side and rear setback. So one option would be to just go down to twelve-five, or perhaps eighty feet of furniture, change this front setback to twenty-five on the side, keep the side and rear fifteen. We could go to ten thousand square feet and seventy-five feet of furniture, drop the front setback to twenty, and the side and rear to ten, or we could go pretty small, go seventy-five hundred for a lot size and fifty feet of furniture, and have sort of minimal front and side setbacks. So these changes are really just examples. You could come up with other conclusions, and we could talk about those if you want. For two- and four-family dwellings, existing is ten thousand square feet per unit, a hundred and fifty feet of furniture, some could go to like eight thousand square feet per unit, or six thousand, or five thousand, whatever makes sense. We could drop the furniture to a hundred feet, seventy-five feet, or sixty feet. The front setback could go to twenty-five feet, twenty fifteen, and the side could go from fifty to fifteen to ten, or ten. So whatever seemed to make sense, we could propose. Multi-family, again, is ten thousand per unit, so we could go to eight, six, or five thousand per unit, go, there's a two-hundred-foot furniture, and as I mentioned, none of these perform to that. Some could change that to a hundred feet furniture, seventy-five or sixty, and sort of change those setback requirements as well. So for commercial and industrial, this applies to both commercial and industrial, fifteen thousand, a hundred feet of furniture, and no setback requirements. For commercial, we could go to ten thousand or eight thousand, we could go to a hundred or seventy-five feet of furniture. And I've left zero setbacks for commercial because that's pretty much what exists today, and if we add, we made a setback here, we might cause a number of properties to become non-conforming. For industrial, I'm sort of going the other way with this, thinking that we would increase the lot sizes here. We could go either twenty thousand or forty thousand, took the furniture of a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty, and have some setbacks so that this would protect surrounding neighborhoods, or have some setbacks for industrial properties to minimize the impacts on neighborhood. So that's what we've got in terms of the little lot sizes and furniture requirements. Take any comments or questions before we move on to the next issue. I know there's a lot of DM, but I hope all of y'all have a good time. Hope we've got here a bit more than thick. Yes.
Bill? We should probably mention, what brought this about, was people that had a lot of foreclosures, and they had problems when they went to buy a foreclosure or do anything.
Right. Yeah, that's exactly what happened. Literally the used tool. Yeah. People were pretty invested in property because it was non-conforming, and they wanted to commission, would have been difficult for them to get commissioned. So we think it's sort of, there's a hint of some investment in there, if people don't want to invest in their properties because they're non-conforming, so if we can make a number of these conforming, I think it would lead to more people being able and willing to make improvements to their properties.
There's a lot of numbers out there, and every time we approach this, or have in the past, everybody seems to get confused by ten thousand square feet, fifteen feet setbacks, ten-foot setbacks, seventy thousand square feet, or whatever the case may be. You have to look at the lot size and what we... You have to look at the lot size and what we have. We can't just draw a square and put a picture up there with a house and then move it in. The bylaws and the way it's written statewide and town-wise, it's all based on square footage. Bill made the comment a couple minutes ago, it's a villain, it's an industrial town, and West Warren was built that way. Nonconformity was what, eighty-four percent in West Warren?
It's high.
Right. Okay. It was packed. That's where everybody lived, that's where the town became a town. And now, for anybody who wishes to sell, or anybody who wishes to have a second or third generation in the home, in the close area, in the village area, and they want to put a sunroom on, or they want to put an addition on, it's a special permit. Well, if we look at the setbacks, we try to break it down a little more, a person will be able to have something built onto that house, and in ten years from now, with that sunroom or porch, or that wood stove in there, or the new kitchen addition put on and moved out a bit, the value of the home goes up, the value, the town's values go up. So that's the way we're looking at everything, all right? You've got to, we only can present it to you. One handout, I gave my handout out, those people can keep it, make copies of it, pass it around, it's public information, I'm giving it to you tonight, all right? This is an informational meeting to show you what we've been thinking of. The way Bill broke it down is explained in that one handout there. Many of you have been here longer than I, and you can see what we have to work with based on that. How do we keep people in town, how do we bring people into town? How do you want it to be broken down? You can break it all the way down to the smallest lot size you want, and you've got to think about it. If we were at fifty-four percent, we can break it down, and we can take that fifty-four percent and bring it up to seventy-five percent, and I think that's, you know, based on what people think, that might be a better way to do it. You have to come back at us. If not, we're stuck here before now and then. So with that, this is the first informational meeting that we're having. The packet's there. We can entertain questions until the cows come home, all right? Tonight, I don't even see how we can have a few questions, but until people absorb what has been presented, there really can't be much coming back. We plan on having informational meetings as we want between now and May, they'll be posted, they'll be on the blue screen, and in the newspaper, the way we have to, and that'd be the website. And the website, the view we can get there.
I do have some copies of the handout, the presentation, everybody wants a copy. So I guess we could have a little discussion tonight about the lot sizes of single-family homes. Does anybody have any suggestions for what we might do in those districts for...
A question. What do you see as the potential biggest downside to decreasing the lot?
Well, what would, the primary impact would be on vacant land, where people could rather than having to do a fifteen thousand square foot lot size, they could do, say, a ten thousand square foot lot size, and if they were subdivision, they could get more lots out of their, say, they have two acres, theoretically, they could get seven or eight lots out of it.
But how many of that would...
But there's really little development happening in the town, so...
How much land is available that those size lots anyway?
But could someone come in and buy one, tear it down, and then turn that into seven pieces?
Right. So it could have some effect of allowing more development than would otherwise be the case, but I think this is where the town wants to encourage growth, is in the village districts where we have the water and sewer services and the transportation systems and the shops where people can walk to, you know, buy whatever they need, rather than encouraging development in the rural district. So that's sort of the trade-off, is maybe we would increase development in the district, but I think it's the perfect place to put it.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Was there, I, I'm sorry, I was late, I thought that we started at seven. Was there any discussion on how this will affect Route 67, the way it's zoned now? Our discussions at the committee were that people were interested in possibly having businesses right on the main road, and I don't know if a lot of it was considered village or zone village, commercial, residential, it was kind of like a mishmash of everything. Does this speak to any of that?
Well, no, this is really just dealing with the conventional requirements. We can have discussion later about who will grow the town.
We did, we did look at that, and that was, that's one of the other halves or thirds that we'll be discussing tonight. Again, it's just informational. When we looked at, when we looked at the properties from the Westbrook Field line all the way to the Palmer's, along 67, you have to consider conservation property, conservation issues, you have to consider the, the, excuse me, the size of the lots that are along there. You've got the river on one side, as we all, all you folks at Landside said a moment ago, you've been here longer than I have. So when you look at it, there isn't too much there, and to consider breaking it down, we're looking at that, and in doing so, yeah, I know, somebody wants to do this and someone wants to do that with some of the furniture that they own on 67, but people have to remember, when you decide to do that, you've got to look at the properties that you have, and most of the properties will end up in front of the ZBA, zoning board of appeals, because you're taking a lot, and some people may be creating a hardship which you can't create to zone differently. People have to look at their lots, go down and take a look at where they sit on their, excuse me, on the, knowing the parcels, and then take a look at what, how the property can be used, before you decide to just want to do this. It's unfortunate, we have no control.
Anybody, anybody here live in the village area? What do you think, this is... Okay, Becky, Becky? What's, did you like it or not, according?
Not if you combine them. You've got it, it's non-conforming, but we got two, another little piece.
Okay, so combine them together, right? What do you think of, you know, trying to make these kinds of changes, think people would benefit from that kind of thing in West Warren?
Well, if I wanted to do anything, I'd have to come forward, just because of my setbacks. I like you guys.
If you just keep the same size, you could down, there's A, B, and C, you've got to look at where you want to go from, the existing, A, B, or C, and how it's going to affect the size of the lots.
Should we do anything, or should we just... We should think we should do something.
We have no problems with it, that's why it's being presented. You have to tell us and talk to the people within the village, in the, excuse me, both villages, Warren and West Warren. How do they want to look at their home in ten years? Who wants to come in to do what? Okay? It's there, it's there to work with, it's there to go with. I know, we're going to get beat up on the floor at the town meeting, that's fine, been there, it's fine, but yeah, put it out so we can come up with a number. You folks will have to live with it. Who wants to live with what, A, B, or C? It's in the handouts that you have, it's open to discussion that way, and then a fact you come in that, based on, talking with a hundred and fifty people, eighty-five, want to go with B or C. Turn around, the planning board can sit here and say, this is what the town wants, we'll present it that way on your behalf, the majority's vote. Other than that, you sit here and we end up on the floor in May, you get slapped silly, and then you sit down.
How many people would you say now coming for special permits or to look for more lots? How busy are you doing that now?
How many people come in?
Yeah.
Not many at all, the past couple years.
We had a fireworks, we had a fire.
I'm sorry?
We had a front porch.
That's it?
This discussion came up with the foreclosures that were in town, hearing that people aren't buying them because their hands are tied to the foundations right now.
Right.
So we want to try to free up some of that.
I think that's a good idea. Creston Street's a perfect example right now.
Yep, oh yeah. And in doing so, it's going to open up a lot for other people, those that want to stay, those that want to add on and move and improve or whatever. Yet where do you want to go with it? No? Where do you want to go now?
Well, the people have no other comments, and we want to the next issue, or we can...
Don't, we can open up the next issue right now.
You are going to have more hearings on this, though, or...
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have more hearings, but if we end up with four people and there's no discussion, discussion.
Right.
Facts to come back and say, hey, as I said a moment ago, thirty-five, forty percent of the people that we spoke with who want it, you know, which ones do they want, let's go with it. I mean, some people are going to say, geez, I didn't have input. Well, there's a lot of people like that. Have it, and get a hold of people that have it, and we'll let the selectmen on all the other boards, too. This has been proposed, the format or the information is available, and we'll give some to each board, if someone wants it, they can get it, and the information meetings will be posted. What did we say? The meeting in, town meeting is when?
May twelfth.
Twelfth. The last meeting we picked was the last week in April or...
April twenty-second.
April twenty-second. If we don't have an answer by April twenty-second, we can't come with an agreement, we're going to pull it, okay? Because there's no sense in going forward. If we can't all come together and work with it and come up with something that you're all going to accept, then there's no sense in going to the floor with folks, okay? You know it's been looked at, you know it's been discussed, it's discussed, and you've got the facts, and you can't go any lower than this. Industrial, commercial, or residential, it went back again, okay? We're willing to go all the way down on these two, on the industrial and commercial, so yeah, we need input. Okay. Bill, you want to move on?
Sure. The next question that we're talking about is medical marijuana, and recently, the planning board asked me to put up a survey on the website to gauge people's opinions about this issue, and whether they would support a medical marijuana by law or not.
Excuse me, Bill. Any of you get the surveys?
It's an online survey.
I understand that. I understand it's an online survey.
There's a link on the homepage for people that want to take it.
Interesting when you see the facts.
Yeah. So, so far, we had seventeen people completed, which is not a big, big sample size, but I think it sort of provides some direction anyway. Question one, do you believe that use of marijuana is a valid treatment option for some medical conditions? Ninety-four percent said yes, and only one person, or about six percent, said no. Should Warren zoning prevent medical marijuana treatment facilities? Just so you see what I'm pointing, so about seventy-one percent said yes, and twelve out of seventeen, and five out of seventeen said no.
Can we lodge in that at all? Any answer?
I'm afraid it wouldn't fit on the screen.
Okay, that's fine.
Where should such uses be allowed? We had several options here, the villages, nobody wanted to see going to a village area, the Wright Mill, seven out of seventeen, or forty-one percent. Five people thought they should be allowed townwide, and five people thought it should not be allowed at all, so this seems to be the winner at this point, and that's in fact where we were thinking of proposing to allow it. Should such facilities allow retail sales? Sixty-eight percent said yes, thirty-one percent said no. Growing marijuana, again, eleven out of seventeen said yes, five said no. Should it allow processing, or manufacturing, essentially, again, a majority thought that it would be appropriate to do that. State law allows five facilities in each county. Should the town work actively to bring a facility to Warren? Pretty much fifty-fifty, fifty-three percent said yes, and forty-seven percent said no. Question six, should the bylaw allow such facilities by Wright or require a special permit? Pretty much an even split, thirty-one thought it should be by Wright, thirty-one percent thought it should be by special permit, which is what we're proposing, and thirty-seven percent thought it should not be allowed at all. Do you believe that such facilities would result in an increase in crime, would have negative impacts on the town or neighborhood? Thirty-five percent thought yes, or sixty-four percent thought no, so about two-thirds felt that it probably would not have any serious negative impacts on the neighborhood. Should such facilities be required to locate a safe distance away from schools, churches, and parks? Most people felt yes, eighty-two percent and seventeen percent said no. And lastly, should we vote in favor of such an article at town meeting and at the zoning amendment? We needed two-thirds vote, so we almost got back here, about sixty-two percent said yes, thirty-one percent said no, and one person wasn't sure. So I think there's sort of a general perception that these kinds of facilities would be beneficial for the town, help people that have conditions where medical marijuana would be an appropriate treatment, and perhaps maybe we have some economic development benefits to the town by adding a kind of a facility in town. The bylaw that we're proposing would allow medical marijuana treatment facilities as a special permit in the Mill Conversion Overlay District, which is the Wright Mill property in West Warren. So that would be very much a self-contained area, would allow for adequate security to make sure that, that there would be, you know, proper safeguards in place, it would be isolated away from residential neighborhoods, so that it wouldn't affect folks living nearby. So it seems to the planning board to be a pretty sensible place to put it. And then the bylaw goes into a lot of detail about, you know, protections to the neighborhood, about requiring them to be located a distance away from parks and playgrounds and churches and other things. Require a security plan that will be reviewed by the police chief to make sure that there's adequate security to prevent break-ins, because it could be susceptible to people wanting to get access to the merchandise inside, so we want to make sure that that's adequately secure. We would require a certificate of registration from the Department of Public Health, that it would conform to all-town standards and bylaws, that there'd be a ten-foot buffer around the site to shield security features and minimize the visual impacts. The use should not generate odors, property may contain a standing sign, so set standards for the size of the sign at thirty-two square feet in total. Limit the hours of operation between eight AM and eight PM, make sure that the noise impacts are minimal by requiring conformity to the DEP noise standard, and make sure that it's adequate power game, and the special permit would be personal to the applicant and will lapse upon sale. So any change of ownership, they have to go back to the planning board for a new special permit. So that's the proposal that the planning board has developed so far. Any comments or questions on this?
I don't have my glasses, so did you save the total number of respondents to the...
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yep. Those?
Is this the same article that was brought up last May?
Changed, minor.
It was a moratorium.
That was a moratorium we asked for last time, and then some of it has been changed to accommodate the town, yet it's still directed by state law, and we fall within that, and in presenting what we have here tonight opens the town for the sale and the ability to have it brought in legally. Answer, is that...
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, the town turned down the moratorium, I think indicating that in fact they had some support for this idea.
Yep.
Was it only in the Wright Mills, is what you're saying? Is that the only place you considered it?
Yes.
I don't know if I, I personally would agree with that, because then we changed the zoning so that we could allow housing in that also, already?
We did.
So you could do something like that, and then housing could go in there.
You could still have the housing, and you could still have the facility.
Right, but I'm just saying, that's kind of why you're putting that area, because like you said, it's not any residential, but you're, there's a potential for residential there. I, I, I don't know, but I thought if you did some sort of zoning for, like, Callahan's property, something like that, there could not be something like that also. I mean, there's a place that isn't built out, you could actually build it and say, this is what you've got to have, where rights may be limited at some point, if you've got housing in there and you've got other things in there.
I guess I thought was, you know, try to make it convenient for people, you know, that the Callahan property is sort of down at West Warren, a way down the building road, it's kind of difficult to get to, but, I mean, it's an idea.
It is, yep.
Well, we were thinking, because you have water through the Quaybod River, and they have water rights at these places for hydroponics, for growing facilities inside, and David Bersky's place, someone through the grapevine we heard was looking at his place... And then David Persky's place, someone through the grapevine we heard was looking at his place also for possibly doing something like this. So, it's... That's why we considered those alternatives. They may not wanna put housing in to set up a growing facility. It may not be the way to go for them when they do that.
I'm just thinking, like I say, it is a big parcel, I mean, with a lot of different buildings and options. So, you may have just...
Yeah, for housing.
You don't know what's gonna happen down the road. In the same token, it may change people's minds to do other things with rights. I mean, some of them may wanna come in and do a project saying, you know, that's located there, forget it. So, you may have... You may end up limiting what they can do down there.
Yet, with that thought, how long do we keep getting comments about the mill not being used?
But I'm, you know...
It goes both ways. I can see it both ways, and I can understand where you're going. Yet, the mill is trying to do something, and if there's a back... Whoa, okay. If there's a back building or something back there that's gonna be away from the residential, that's gonna be further up, and it has the water rights by the dam and everything else, it can be secured, and hopefully, they look at both ways to put industrial along with hydroponics or whatever, grow, and then residentials. If it's done right, they can probably all live together. Okay? Yet, you have to look at it. It's been... How many years now that the mill's been sitting here? Six, seven?
I just hope none of the town or the boards consider that something that they have to find something. I mean, Wright's Mills is very capable of finding... They knew when they bought the place what it was.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's not up to the town boards or people in town to find a use for that building. It's up to them to find a use for the building. So, I'm just saying there should be a second option.
Yes, no problem. Agreed, a second option. Yep.
That's why I think...
I had made a suggestion that they contact Maine, because Portland has one of these places. And I'm thinking it's in an area where there's housing apartments and things too. But they haven't had problems, and it's... They've had their... Their facilities have been going for a long time, for years.
And we only permitted the back building, the...
Furthest one.
The back for housing, and that's the only one that's permitted right now.
So, you know, it could be a catch-22 for both issues. The whole... The thing is, we look at that again as a facility that would be secure, that if someone in hydroponics, according to state law, is a big issue right now for the grows, unless it's an individual grow, which a person may have, and it's highly regulated for that individual by X amount of plants, wear, fence, and everything else. That's another issue. Yet, to open up the town to get something in here to create work, create industrial, create a facility that can grow it and sell it throughout the state if maybe, or whatever, or if they can, we have to look at those areas. What other areas do we have? I'm not selling rights by any means. None of us are selling rights. That's the last thing we're gonna do. They bought it, they sell it. Don't keep coming back to the planning board and saying that we're not doing anything with it. Can't do something with somebody else's property. We're suggesting that it be considered. And then you can... We can approach them, or they can come to us once they see what the town wishes to do with it, that's all. Any other comments? Any others? Throw some in?
Sure.
I have a question, Bill.
Sure.
Which one of those buildings have turbine facilities that are operational? Does anybody have turbines that are operational?
A wall?
Right.
No.
No.
He had a feasibility study done
Okay.
for the lower dam, and that was found to be feasible but expensive. So, he can do it, but he needs to have a buyer for the power. So, if he can get tenants in the mill, he could actually create hydrologic power from that dam, which would help lower the energy price.
That was my thought.
For the tenants, yeah. So, it's feasible.
Yes, I...
Are the buildings... Have they been inspected to be a growing facility? Do we know that it's feasible to grow in those buildings?
No, we don't.
So, it's just speculation for now?
No. But he could do dispensary there.
Right, that's what I thought this was all about, was the dispensary.
Now, this is not hypothetical. It's looking at, could they resurrect some of the buildings for it? It's pretty simple. You can grow marijuana in your closet like a mushroom. Okay? And you don't even need a grow light.
Yes, but it grows 15 feet high, so...
Yeah, well, yeah.
Not that many of us know, okay?
But anyway, it's just the idea that we've gotta look at something. We've gotta look at places, and that's all... That's what we're looking at there. The biggest thing is, does the town want it? If the town accepts it on the floor, though, by the way, with what we have or with your input to make adjustments, then we have the opportunity, or will have the opportunity, to look. Once it's accepted, then the town can look about and see who's who. The town, we may not get selected. Again, there's only so many permits that are issued per county. All right? So, at least we're on the board with it. And we can say, yeah, Warren's, you know, consider Warren. All right? And then with the by... With the... With the bylaw, it's gonna open it up. We're gonna protect what we can, the schools, the churches, and areas, you know? And we're not denying anybody. We can't deny, and we're not denying. State says so, and we're not. We're trying to get it so that everybody can live with it. All right? Everybody can live with the bylaw. We can get it, or... Bylaw, all right, bylaw. And we can have... We can have everybody working together on it, and no one's gonna... There's always gonna be one or two that don't like it anyway, and that's fine. Yet, the majority of the people will be able to adjust to it. We have to adjust to change. Change is coming slow but sure. We have to be able to adjust to it. And we're not... We haven't closed this town off to anywhere. Bill, anything else?
Uh, I'm listening.
Michael, listen. Mr. Burrell?
Oh. Yeah, this is a curious question to ask. Right now, there's actually... In front of Wright's Mill, there's actually another for-sale sign there, as I guess the current owners are selling it. So, the question is, is if a new business buys the entire property and decides to put in like a manufacturing facility, which means they could possibly tear down some of the buildings and build a brand-new facility. If that is the case, then that means that that property would then be used for a separate purpose. So, then how would the... How would the... How would these changes, saying, you know, we'd like to use the Wright Mill property? How would... That would have to be changed, because if a business bought it tomorrow and says, we're putting in a manufacturing facility, and that's it, right, then you don't have that property available anymore to say that's available for medical marijuana.
We did not say that we were using Wright's.
Oh, okay.
We did not say that. It's a consideration. Wright's is gonna do with what they want.
Right, right.
They might want to make it, bring the ball in there, crush it down, and leave nothing like they did down in... Down in Sutton, in those areas, dig down the old mills.
Yeah.
Wright's is gonna do what they want. Mill might have some insight, but we did not say we're using Wright's.
Oh, okay.
It's a consideration.
All right, I apologize if...
When you consider something, you have to have the owner's approval.
Right.
They don't have anything. This is just open to the floor. Wright's is owned, and they're gonna do what they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's about 600,000 square feet of floor space there. There's several buildings. So, it's possible he could take one of those smaller buildings and put in a facility there. Or if he was gonna grow, had a major growing operation, he could probably take one of the bigger buildings and convert that to a cultivation site. But, yeah, so, whatever goes in there, you know, the owner has to figure out how he's gonna use that entire property. Wouldn't wanna do something in one spot that would have a major effect on discouraging other, you know, businesses from coming in. So, as Bill was saying, it's kind of up to the owner to figure all that out. All we're doing is saying that the town thinks this would be an appropriate place to put in a medical marijuana facility. But it'd be up to him to, you know, find somebody that would be willing to do it.
But I would push ourselves toward, liting ourselves into just this one location. Maybe we need to look at some other commercial locations to connect.
Where it's evenly located and other things.
Hey, maybe we could find...
At least one other, one other spot.
Well, Callahan's definitely would be a good idea.
Get Tivos to open up again. Hey, hey, you got quite a few places in town that you could use it. A smoke chop or something, you gotta... We can laugh at it, but there's properties that are available at a commercial lot that can be utilized.
Is it five licenses per state or five per county?
Per county.
County.
35 statewide.
Each county gets allotted numbers by size and by the way the state has broken it down. X amount of permits per state.
35 statewide.
Yes.
Maximum of five per county. So far, there's only one in Muster County, that's in Dilford. So, there's potential for four more in the county.
Also, I don't think a lot of people understand that they've had medical... They've had pot pills, marijuana pills. I gave them to my residents at work. They're on them for cancer, nausea, everything. They're just named something different. But it's marijuana. It's being used now for cancer. Anyway, and it has been for years.
The ability is...
It's not just somebody smoking weed.
The ability is there for the town to get on... To get on board with it if the townspeople want it. Okay? We'll go to the floor if the people feel that it's worth it. It's worth it to open a town again to something else such as this.
But to get them into our town, we need to have a zoning bylaw on the books. They won't even consider you unless you have something to start with.
And that's the point. Tried to get that point across last year. And simply, we asked for, I'm sorry, but we asked for a moratorium. The only reason we asked for the moratorium is so we could get the town's input, how the town felt. And boy, that word went phew, over like a lead balloon. Okay? And because we were trying to push it off. No, we weren't. We were trying to figure out what the heck to do. Okay? Here we are again. Changed a few words, looked at the way the regulations are written. It's a fact that if we don't have one, you're not gonna get one. And then you gotta look at things a lot differently. So, with that, that's the second point considered. And Bill, the other point?
The third one is the owner of the hydrolocated Fadbrooks property has asked to have his property placed in the Mill Conversion Overlay District. Right now, the only property in there is owned by, is the Wright's property. So, currently, you know, all this land here, and then it goes up the hillside, is in the overlay. And Mr. Persky, who is the owner of the Hargrove property, has asked to include his facility in the district. So, it's about four, almost five acres or so. He's got this large mill building, which was once part of the, of that entire Wright Mill operation. It's about 20,000 square feet. The Mill Conversion District allows, as Jim mentioned, a variety of residential, commercial, and industrial kinds of uses. So, he felt that it would be a benefit for him. He was trying to sell and market the property to... If his facility was in the overlay district, it would make it more marketable, and then perhaps it might attract somebody who was interested in doing the next use development. So, he's asked to have his property rezoned, which I think makes sense, because then we'd have this entire area included in the district rather than having this hole in the middle of it, which is currently the case. So, I think, you know, it kind of makes sense for him to ask this, and hopefully, the town would see that it makes sense as well.
I think the screen said it wasn't included, Bill.
I know.
He chose not to.
Is that...
He chose not to.
Is that what that was? Why was that?
I don't know. I guess he...
He came to our meeting and said he didn't wanna be part of it.
Yeah.
That was a statement made by the owner and the individual. He did not want it at the time. Now, now he wishes to. What has no problems with it? It's just the fact that we, you know, we have to present it publicly. I didn't know that it's been... The owner is considering... His ask to us to include it within. It should've been on it first, second thought. Now, it's come back to have it included. So, you know, based, when you look at it all, as Bill said, when you consider it, where it is, location, and everything else, the individual might have contacts too on the outside that he might be able to fulfill that with industrial for the town, benefit himself, but also benefit the town. Bring it back up... Bring everything back up to... It's about to bring things back up to the town. I don't think there should be too much of issue with it. You know, again, we've discussed it, and I... All of us have agreed that without a doubt, it should be. Though we have to present it here. Let's consider that. And I think the last issue, the question was asked earlier. That was one of the three facts that we were talking about, okay? We will be having, as I said earlier, in a couple times, more informational meetings right until the 25th of April. Two facts that we have here. The three things that are presented tonight are those facts right there that we'll be hopefully presenting on the floor in May. With that, the other issue that we've been talking about for quite a while. And it was brought up, as I stated, was, what are we gonna do with 67? The Westbrookfield Line to Palmer. We... Where are we gonna put commercial? What's there... What's open? What property is there? Who owns what? And Bill went along. Bill's looked at everything, and I think Bill can fill you in with a little more. Again, this is just information. This is not even going to be considered for May. We will consider this right after May to get it... Get it... Get it, yeah, excuse me. To have informational hearings, get a little more information, more input from everybody, and then we'll work on it. Hopefully, I can't say it's gonna be November, but we wanna get it going so that we can open up that section of Route 67. Boarded by the river on both sides, most the way around, and the hills on one side. Some people own it. Bill, go ahead.
I don't have a formal presentation on this, but I do have some information to show that we can start thinking about what we wanna do with this area. So, if we start over here on the... On the... On the Westbrookfield side, what I have shown on the map in brown here are floodplains, and in blue here are the wetlands. So, we have some environmental issues. The orange line is Route 67. And this blue line on either side is a buffer of 1,000 feet on either side of Route 67. So, I think we'd be looking at some area within here to consider for rezoning and also on the other side of Warren Center. In, as we move down into Warren Center, a lot of this area is zoned village. So, the Village District is this sort of magenta hatch pattern. So, from here to the beginning of the Village District around Washington Street is zoned rural. There's some residential, some also zoned residential in here as well. As you can see, on the north side of 67, it is constrained by the river, the effects of the floodplain and the wetlands. On the southerly side or the easterly side of 67, there is some available land in here, which perhaps could be considered. Once we get into the Village District and through here, of course, the commercial's already allowed, and it is fairly well-developed. So, I'm not sure whether we need to do much rezoning in here unless you wanted to create a new commercial district. But again, commercial's already allowed in the Village District, so I'm not sure you would really gain much. And then, sort of, the Village District ends around here by Coyle Road. And so, from here down into the Village area of West Warren, it's also zoned primarily rural. There's the rivers on the southerly side, so there's a lot of floodplain in here, so it would not really be appropriate to rezonate for commercial use, I don't think. On the northerly side, between 67 and Old West Warren Road, for example, there's some property in here that maybe we could consider doing some rezoning for some additional commercial development. And then as you get out further towards the Palmer Line, again, the Village District comes out here, pretty much to about where Road and through here. This is all village, but again, it's pretty much floodplain on both sides of the road, so that obviously is a constraint. And then when you get out by the sewage treatment plant, which is down in here by the river, there is a lot of floodplain, some land, perhaps in here, although I think it's a little steep in this area. So, there are some environmental reasons to consider what to do with some of this land where it makes sense for commercial development. So, what I was hoping that we could... You could sort of give me some of your thoughts. some of your thoughts about where you think development might make sense to go on 67. If there's any area that you have in mind, that we could consider rezoning, we could do some more specific analysis of it. But there are some issues, I think, with, with some environmental issues. But if we look at some of, and I guess it doesn't show through the long screen, but we do have a lot of information that we can look at as we go forward. So just curious as to know what your thoughts were in terms of where you're coming from.
I don't know if we should be worried about what floodplain and what's not, or whatever. I think that's the burden of whoever wants to come into town to do it. Who would think today that extramar would be allowed during floodplains? They're in, you know, areas with extramar is there. And so I'm just trying to say that other places in town that we may consider wetlands, that if there's a will, there's a way, and people can address those different things. I don't think you, I think the way we were thinking is it should be spot zoning, it should be just opened up. And obviously, if somebody's got a piece of floodplain and they want to put a factory there, they can't do it. So I'm not so sure. You'd have to single out each individual piece of property. I think you just open it up, say 67, X amount of feedback or whatever off of 67, it's allowed. A certain, or whether it's on the special permit or whatever. And then someone else has to come in and prove, you know, that it is a buildable piece of land. It's not up to, I don't think it's up to the plan. I could come in right now, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong, I could come in here with a piece of land that I own, with the frontage and the square footage, even if it's in the water. I could come in and say, I need this signed up as a lot, I build a lot. It doesn't mean I can build on it, but it's right of way to do that. So I'm just thinking, a developer could come in and say, well, we can, we can do this. We can go back further, we can do this, do that, whatever. But it's up to them to prove to you that they can do that. Obviously, they come to you and they say, they're going to and they can't, they can't. But I just, I would think the planning board's job would be harder if you kind of spot zone. I think it'd be just easier to open it all up. That's my thing.
In the back, we have another question.
Could someone explain the difference between village and commercial?
Well, the town has three zoning districts. Rural, which is most of the town, residential, which is primarily just for housing, and the village district, which include Warren Center and West Warren.
So village means commercial to us now, right?
Village is really the primary commercial area of the town, but it's primarily devoted to residential use in the way that currently, the way that the land has developed.
The way it's populated now.
Right. But commercial is allowed, and most of it has occurred, you know, along Main Street in Warren Center and West Warren. But it's allowed in the entire village area, so you could have some commercial developments go into residential neighborhoods, because it's allowed there. Just the way the town established the zoning pattern in 1984 in the village, it allowed commercial and industrial. So the two mills, the Wright property and Warren pumps, are just for uses for the village district. So you can do quite a lot within the current zoning for those two village areas.
Any other questions, reference? Jim's point was very, very valid. The burden is on the individual. We can designate from 67 one side to the other, the length of it. You've got to meet with all the other boards, you've got to meet the requirements set by state or whoever. Yet it's just, all we're doing is just showing you what's there. Bill, some people may not know, or even though you've been here that long, based on the way the color was set up, this color scheme set up, it's just showing floodplain. We have, it has to be considered by the individual. We're just showing it as is. That's all. Once we decide and people have input with the board after May, then we'll go forward with it. Melissa?
Well, it would be the easiest way to accomplish this. Would it be easier to take the rural and just convert them to village? Or to set up a whole new?
I like this, versus make 67 commercial. From one end of town to the other, just say 67 is going to be commercial with access off of 67.
Do like an overlay district with the towers.
That's what we were talking about.
I've been in talks with the chairman of Westbrookfield Planning Board. We commute to CMR PC. And I told him we were up to, and he would like to expand it to Westbrookfield. They really would like to see something go in right at the line of going towards Westbrookfield, and they would be in favor to go joint with us on expanding that whole area as a commercial district. He told me, he says he'll make it happen.
Makes sense.
So just to tell you, when I mentioned it, they're on board with it. He told me. He says, whatever we come up with, we'll go join on it.
So with that thought in mind, again, it's food for thought for people here, and food for thought for people who own the property. We can work with you, we're willing to do it, with input, and get that open so that we have a commercial overlay within the town up into a certain point on Westbrook, uh, West Warren and Warren. Up to that point where we, you know, we can't come right into the center of town. Yet, if we can, we'll do what we can with that also. So that's the issue that we have, that's what we're working for beginning May. The three issues that were presented tonight are the issues that we want to get on the board, excuse me, we want to have the public hearings on, and we want to get it on the floor in front of the town to get this moving on so that we have this here this evening, and we have the town being able to work with everything and go on from there. It does open it up. A lot sizes, I know. A lot of numbers are there, a lot of people get confused by it. And it's, if people sit down and we keep it under KISS principle, and don't take offense to it, it's just a term I use, that we can open it up and get it done. Whether we agree or not, these are things that we have to do. Some people you can't please all the time, only certain people. We can get things done with. Is there any other questions on the three facts in the last issue here this evening? Okay, Bill, thank you. Mr. Lavash, please, go ahead.
Just have one suggestion. The next informational meeting, if it's going to be in this room, maybe you want to talk to, what's his name?
That's already been set up. The informational meetings, this is just the beginning.
You're just, you're putting on TV?
Yes. Now that the word is out, well, the word is out, beginning here tonight. From now on, each informational meeting, and specifically the one on the 25th, will be on the blue screen with Eboard. Yep, and that way we'll be able to get it right out to everybody. Again, you can get it out to everybody. Comes on the floor is what we need. All right, folks, if there's nothing else, no other questions based on the floor back here this evening, as we cross the last room here. Thank you for coming in, Bill, thank you. Can you, Brian, come here? Thank you very much. We'll take a five minute recess at this time. Ten hours, we'll be back at five, okay? Just the word, not a preacher. All right, what I'd like to do as we move on here this evening, Bill, thank you. And with the consideration of the questions about Route 67, Bill, if we can work on that.
Okay.
How well that, both sides. All right, what I'd like to do is move on with number five. Payroll for Becky Asser in the amount of 201.67 and 18264. Is there a motion to accept the payroll as written and present?
I make a motion that we accept the payroll for Becky as written.
Motion made second. All in favor?
All right.
Sign it and pass it. As that's going on, look down. We have a request for postage in the amount of $154. Is there a motion to accept the postage? And the postage in reference to what's that?
I'm sorry, that was too easy. No, just for, you know, mailers.
Can you summon someone that wants to go about it?
I make a motion that we pay the postage for $154.
Bill, motion's made. Second? Over. Hi, preacher.
And we have, really.
Isn't it, Phil, just so you know, there's an invoice here that, that's your invoice. I don't know if you realize it was a delay in check. For whatever reason, the selectmen want the majority of the board to sign, so we're going to have to wait, get a meeting. All right? Because before, I was putting them in. So just, it's going to be mailing them to Madeline, and myself, just send it to me. And then I'll get it to her.
Postage's there. Where am I going now? Bill's invoice? All right, Bill's invoice for 1,300. Well, that's going around.
I make one.
Why don't we make a motion? Why don't we, let's read it first and do it as we're doing. Okay, we'll read that. Let's go to CMR PC FY16 assessment, 1332.22. And that's paid from the board of selectmen's budget. All right, that is our yearly membership. Right, Peter?
Yes.
That's our town's.
I believe it was a 2.5% increase this year.
That's fine.
They gave everybody that, because that's what their charter says the most they can give for.
Across the board. So. All right, is there a motion to accept the assessment? Again, it's paid by the board of selectmen's budget. It is our membership, the town's membership, the CMR PC for the amount of $1,332.22. Is there a motion, please?
I make a motion that we pay CMR PC 1332.22.
Motion made second? All in favor? Those are expensive blocks, lunch. I know we just accepted this in thinking, has this been paid, Becky?
No, not till July 1st.
We don't have to worry about it. It will pay.
Oh, yeah. It's in the selectmen's budget. I got to that till July, and that's.
Number nine, telegram of Gazette invoice for the amount of 294. And that's in reference to Mark Andrews' public hearing.
Make a motion to pay the 1332.
Motion made second? Questions? None? Here we go. All in favor? It gets worse and worse.
I'm a Republican.
I tried the Republican. 894.
You can't even know. 894. If somebody dies, it costs $500 for my aunt to get her.
It gets a lot. Mine's on the back of the tune, oh, God.
I make a motion that we accept invoice from Bill Scanlon for 1300.
All right, motion's been made. Everybody had the opportunity to review it. Motion's been made second, in please.
Second.
Second, any questions? I hear none, all in favor? What is?
The annual conference, I'm not going to go.
Where is it?
March 21st. There's nothing that looks interesting. So I don't know if anybody's interested.
This is the one at Holy Cross?
Yeah, Melissa, you said you were passing?
Yeah.
They never gave me.
I know, I know.
I even had the mom, how many times? Asking them for, they were going to send me a PowerPoint of what went on at the meeting, because they had no handouts. None. They had one room, like six of the classes, they have one little piece of paper. I said, they expected you to go there.
They went up too, 65 bucks.
And to write emails on one of them, that's for sure. Not for that much money. Those people are volunteers that do the, that do the teaching, so.
Wasn't it comfortable for breakfast and, Ellen?
Yeah, I get there early enough. Hey, Peter, do you want the board to consider sending them a letter in reference to the?
Because you're getting handouts.
No, to represent, in reference to our representative who did request handouts and have never gotten based on. Is it that important? I mean, is this something that we missed, or?
I would just ask, to me, if we, I mean, I've sent them emails telling them that there should have been handouts. So, I mean, they never even respond back. I don't think you're going to get any more than what I've gotten.
Yet is it worth to let them know that we?
We're not happy about that?
Yeah.
I mean, you can do it, but I think you might be just wasting time. It takes them a year to a year and a half to get, last year's, I haven't looked in the last couple months, but last year's may be up there now, but the fall wasn't there, so.
Why does it happen?
It takes them over a year.
Bill, why is there all this?
I don't know.
They have, most of it's already on PowerPoints. So I don't know what the problem is.
I think it's just a staffing issue.
It has to be, because they're, I just don't think they're very organized.
I think they send it out to UMass rather than having a private person do it. So I think it's just, it depends students and I guess.
Could be. It could be that's why it takes so long to have it done. They have a whole semester to do it.
So yes or no?
I don't think it's a good idea. I don't think you can gain, you could ask them if there's going to be handouts. I think you could send them an email requesting, you know, I mean, should we bring tape recorders and camcorders? I'm going to consider going if there's something there. I haven't looked.
Was it the every possession that you went to? Because when we went, we had tons.
They didn't have any last year. They had one of them, one of them.
We didn't go last year.
No, I did. And I was very disappointed. The three other classes I attended, there wasn't a single stitch of handout. And they said that most of the people didn't have time to do the printing. I said, I mean.
All you do is send your copy in and they print it, and then somebody does this.
I wasn't the only one that was asking this, a lot of the people were. Julie, the one that came.
The one we always sat with?
Yes, she, she got a handout from one of the classes. And she comes to me, get it? I said, they said there was nothing. I said, I felt terrible. She come back with one legal document, gave it to me, and the rest of the classes had nothing.
Well, all right, but it, you know, it's a shame that, I know there are plenty of constraints and whatever, that's.
Well, a lot of, even some of the speakers were coming in late, and some didn't show up.
There's information that if they're, if they're that unorganized and.
They're not very organized. Last year they weren't, that's all I can say. Here's the fire, they've had handouts, the Attorney General, or any, a lot of the other.
They emailed me once.
A lot of the bigger names, Colton Page, when they're there, they always have handouts for everybody. I mean, I'm not saying it happens every year. That was probably the worst year last year.
Okay, well, hopefully things get better, and if not, maybe we will send them a memo just to say, hey, from the past years, what's going on? But, all right. All right, with that, other business, Becky?
I got to give you guys the packets for the Land Hill solar project.
How's that go?
Done, right?
See, then somebody else just bought it.
They, I just got information in today that DEP has approved the permit for the solar farm. So that's in the works, there's a lot of conditions, but, you know, they've approved it. We have not really gotten back to the formalizing the lease and the tax agreement. So that's still waiting to happen. So the stipend, I have anything to sign that. Hopefully, we can get to that in the next couple of weeks. I believe Borrego is all set, they're moving forward with the project. And they're taking care of their, their end of things. So I've been hoping that, you know, the planning board will act on this in due course and.
I have a question. Anybody mention a solar farm on August 1st row?
Not that I've heard.
Where's that?
In Ducky O'Shea's.
Oh, really? Well, good for them, until something happens here.
I'm thinking, huh, I don't know. Because I says, gee, I'd like to sell it at my house. But I was talking just for my house. Well, I don't know if the lines are going to be big enough, because they've already told him that, you know, he needs the whatever. And how much the state gives and all that's not done yet, well.
You like your parrot?
Until, you know, whatever they consider is fine, you got to come here. That one over here, and what's his name's from?
Stargardt?
Say again?
Stargardt.
No. On Westbrookfield.
Oh, yeah. I read that in the paper.
Boy, did you see that thing going?
Yeah, fast.
They went in there one day, all the other movers come in, boom! And now the backlog trying to get in there. All the delivery trucks are stopping on nine. And they're bringing out the lulls to take the stuff in, they have wasted no time to get that one up.
In the winter time, this winter, I'm surprised.
They worked all the way through.
My son's been working on one all winter up in Hardwood.
But it's just like, holy Michael, hey, whatevers. But you mentioned something about the lease or something?
Well, you know, the town meeting approved, gave the authority to the selectmen to negotiate and then enter a lease.
Yeah.
And the, the tax agreement of the pilot.
Yeah.
So they have the authority, there's drafts, town council's been working on it. So it's, it's in process.
If Borrego is already to go, you, you can't go until the lease is done, right?
Correct.
So we're still waiting.
Right, that's... Yeah, I mean, it's, those things take time, you know?
Motion is the word I would use.
Keep it scroll. You're going to talk about wanting to get things done and then all of a sudden it's back asswards. Sometimes things should have been done before it got called.
I think Borrego's been a little frustrated about it too, so they're, they're hoping to get that resolved, so.
That's, well, that's it, anything else, Becky?
Well, still talking about the Landville, I did have time on send electronic copies to both Graves and Quinn to give us proposal. And I've only heard back from Graves so far.
And we mentioned that too. If Quinn doesn't get back, we go with Graves, okay? And that's next meeting, right?
No, that's actually moved to April first because of a publication, I pulled it because it was going to be eight ninety-four. And I said, no way. Eight, the Republican.
Eight ninety-four?
The advertisement, the legal act. And I said, what? And they said, is that like for two weeks straight? And she said, no, that's two publications. I said, oh my God, forget it. So I put it back in the TNG, but we bumped it out to April first. So Tanya Bond is okay with that.
They really hate us, huh?
Well, what are you supposed to do?
They have a hot wanted ad, isn't it? Yeah, they're ridiculous. They're, they got a much quicker turnaround than TNG, you're going to give them more time, but...
No, April first, so that gives Quinn the opportunity, if they don't?
Well, yeah, but, you know, you got to sign a contract, then we're going to get the money before they get to work, so...
Hmm, yeah, what are we supposed to do?
I'd sign Graves tonight if I were you.
I'm sorry?
I'd sign the contract for Graves.
Where is it?
I mean, I don't know, that's up to the board.
Well, point made.
Yeah, you're right. She's going upstate.
But anyway.
You know why Quinn hasn't gotten back yet?
They didn't get back, who's last time?
I gave, I sent both of them, both Jeff and Kevin, an email saying, as a heads up, you'll be getting a, a file to, to provide a proposal. I heard right back from Jeff saying, thanks for the heads up, and nothing's happened. And as a matter of fact, I called Aaron at Tanya Bond, I said, did you, did you indeed send it to both of them? Because I've only heard back from one, she said, no, and she copied me on the email that she sent to them.
I'm surprised, because when Kevin came, he was very...
Oh my God, he was a volunteer.
Yeah, how long ago were they notified? Three weeks ago? No, longer?
I don't know, just like last week or getting the last week.
But Graves, Jeff got back with everything?
Yeah.
What's that next meeting?
Twenty-fifth. But if you don't, if you, if we wait till the twenty-fifth to see if Quinn gets something in, it's like in his letter, it'll have something within two weeks of receiving the board's proposal, but I'm going to get the check in first. They're not going to do the work until I get the check in from Tanya on.
What do you want to do?
And I mean, you don't want to hold a hearing if, if we don't, if we're not prepared.
Yeah, yeah, no, fine, Peter, what do you want to do?
I think we're stuck, and we have to act, but I think we should send an email immediately to Quinn, tell him that we...
This is the second time he's done it.
We can't wait, we have to act immediately on this and...
So you've lost out on two.
And Wordler's now, just to, you know, so we can see what they had and bring to the table.
I, I think we should act.
Act?
Yeah.
By act meaning?
By signing something tonight.
Melissa?
I'm taking my calendar.
Well, we have a time constraint.
I get the one out of the drawer and circulate, so, so what do you want to do?
Sign it, and he's here.
Ed?
I agree.
Yeah.
I do too, so is it a motion that we sign, the, uh...
Graves.
What was the, what was the cost?
Sixteen hundred for the first peer review, and then everything is, you know, by the hour.
But we don't pay that, they, they pay it.
Quinn did not get back to us on the last one, they didn't, they haven't acknowledged even receiving this one yet. All right, and Graves has done both.
Did I check my email before we came in here tonight, just to see if I had it, and I, and I don't know?
You have dealt with them before, and it's gone dead. So is it an agreement that between all four of us that we sign it now? Yes?
Yes.
No, please, there a motion to, to sign the, um...
I make a motion, we sign the agreement with Graves.
Agreement, that's what I was...
With the solar farm.
I'll second it.
Second. For the, for the amount list, the way it's written and everything else per se, correct?
Yeah.
Who's made second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're not covered down the first part of the show, but when people don't want to get back to us, I'm sorry?
Just notify Quinn, tell him, you snooze, you lose, though.
Yeah, you don't test around.
Well, they were supposed to, what do you mean? I thought they did.
No, it was great.
I've been down here.
That's why I don't go to the...
I know I've been down here since I complained about the guardrails missing, so.
You know, maybe there's an opportunity.
This is the doll, I think, it'd be better if I took money for it.
Maybe there's an opportunity.
You got paid?
No, the guardrails are up and everywhere.
Yeah, I have the gun, so I, I just, no reason to...
All right, here we go.
I'll fax that to, uh, to my...
It's good reading, you know where.
Picked up my blue container and all, all right.
And I'll contact Tanya Bond for that check.
This is the whole thing in a nutshell.
So do you guys have any idea, while Bill is still here, to our next informational meeting?
I don't know where it's going to go, the information was there, few questions, some looks, they are...
What do you have, public hearings scheduled for?
April twenty-second.
So between now and then, you got to have an informational meeting?
At least two.
All right. Because the board...
That's two weeks before town meeting. Every two weeks before town meeting, so it'll get...
So can you get the agenda, you can get the amendment typed up and everything else?
We do need to work with the specific proposals for the information.
Yeah.
We didn't really get a lot of feedback.
I would just go by...
On marijuana?
No.
Yeah, so the village.
Oh, the village?
There's always lots of...
I think, the only thing we're going to get feedback to is when that, when the folks go back down to West Warren Warren. And then, the next one will be feedback, after that, it's kind of...
I don't even hope they'll stay silent, I think, try to bring in as many people as...
If they look at the percentage, if we go from fifty percent to eighty-four, they're all going to go go to the eighty-four. Okay, which is, hey, that's what they want.
Like you did middle of the road.
Yeah, like the middle, middle one.
I do two yet, it's up to the townspeople, right? Majority's going to say, we can say, we can vote.
Well, why don't you propose it?
Just middle of the road.
We can propose it.
If there's any additional feedback.
Wait till Jimmy's group says.
Michael, what are they meeting again?
Uh, this, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
We could, hopefully, we could talk about it from there. Hopefully, if they talk about it.
So if you want, we could put that on our agenda to provide an answer to those questions.
I think they're going to anyways, tell you through that.
We'll come up with a number for you.
So if the CAC has your meeting next Wednesday, the eighteenth, is the twenty-fifth too soon? For another informational?
No, because we can have the information that they, hopefully, someone comes back with and have a discussion on it. And that will be the twenty-fifth.
Maybe tell them that we're thinking the middle of the road, not the higher end, like the ten points or one or something.
Middle of the road.
Middle of the road.
B.
B.
It's always up for modification in the future, so.
Uh, would you, which, they got to consider that...
Because not only that, I mean, you have to keep in mind too, we need to get the, the legal and the paper.
Yes.
What we're doing?
Bill, it'll just be on the village and, uh, the sizes.
Okay.
That's all for the information, and we're not going to have another medical marijuana one until later. But this is the biggest issue, correct?
Right.
Okay.
We got to get real some of those events and properties and this is the best and that's all.
Becky, putting on for, uh, like, meeting at six thirty, I don't know, ten to seven. Give us twenty minutes to get stuff done, payroll stuff, that'll be the, what else do we have on the twenty-fifth? Six fifty, uh, six forty-five on the twenty-fifth, okay? Meeting at six thirty, six forty-five, no more.
Then we're having a meeting April first?
Yep.
And the twenty-second?
Yep. April first will be the Landville area.
I, I, any other, I don't think, or do we agree, you, you make the decision, on, we open the commercial and sixty-seven. There's no sense of going any further, right now the door's open to hold any hearings on this until May. Any, any more...
Until after May.
Any, yeah, till after May.
Right.
It's open.
Westbrookfield, we're going to get feedback from them and, um...
Nothing's going to, if anybody asks, nothing's going to be discussed until after May.
But that's what I don't understand, is if we open it to commercial?
Right.
And we go right up to Westbrookfield, what difference does it make what we're doing in Warren and down towards Palmer?
I don't care about Palmer area right now, I'm not talking...
Well, that's what they're talking, sixty-seven.
Right, the whole lot.
Yeah.
That was the first, what was, I was told, what they were proposing was more towards Westbrookfield.
Well, if they're talking, but that's, it's in Westbrookfield anyway. They were going to build a medical facility in the gravel bank over here.
Cliffy's?
No, they're not, not yet.
No kidding, that was years ago, we had the...
Yes, yes, but this is what the talk the other night was, that that's where they would like to see a shopping center going.
And who's going to put a shopping center in there?
They got, they were talking to people, so, he just told me, it, it would work with them.
So it ain't going to be in our lifetime?
So, right, but...
Sure, safe going all the way to Walmart.
But anyway, all right, with that, with that, we'll, we'll, we'll start there, Bill, on the twenty-fifth. Our next meeting.
So right now, April twenty-fifth, um, March twenty-fifth, April first, April twenty-second, public hearing.
Wonderful. Okay, anything else? Bill, thanks, good job. Everybody here, thank you.
Well, look, we do it here.
Uh, motion, do you?
I make a motion later.
Second. All in favor?
Hi, hi, I thought you'd be there, but we couldn't have time, wait.
Right now?